Good evening. This is the East Aurora Union Free School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, May 3, 2023. Please join me in the pledge. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. May I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss matters related to five particular employees and one particular student? So moved by Mr. Cassidy. Second, seconded by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, presentations carried six zero. Thank you.
May I have a motion to return from executive session and enter the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Wiler. Second. Seconded by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion. Thank you for your patience. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, absentations. That one is carried seven zero. And then on the public hearing.
Okay. Welcome, everybody, and thank you for being here. This is the public hearing for the 2023-2024 School District Pledge. Here's our agenda for today's discussion. And again, just to get started, the values kind of are the driving force behind everything that we do. And that's the standard for the decision-making for the board, administrators, and teachers. And it's been a pretty good guiding force as we've developed over the last several We'll start off with our reserve funds. We've been through this several times. This is something that we'll have to decide sometime over the summer, actually. And so what the state asks us to do is keep the reserve funding up front so that the public knows we're thinking about putting additional dollars. So we're looking at the ERS and TRS systems, which are retirement systems for our employees and our teachers. We're also looking at the liability reserve. We're looking to use some of the money that we'll talk about in just a moment from the technology reserve to purchase new Chromebooks for our fifth and ninth graders. We used about $1.8 million from the reserves this year to fund our capital facilities project. And again, we're looking at the repair reserve. We may draw from it depending on our needs or we may fund it depending on how our money works out over the next several months. So appropriations, again, we've been through this. This hasn't changed a whole lot over the last several meetings. This is basically where our cause, most of our expenses come through salary and fringe benefits of employees. We also have expenses in equipment supplies, contractual. And you're pretty familiar with all of this. You can see that we have a nice savings. Because BOSI services are primarily related to specialized programs for our students as well as technology. Again, transportation, small cost increase there for a total of about $2.5 million. So where does the money come from to pay all of our bills? It comes through primarily our tax levy, which is on our local taxpayers, which is just a hair over $26 million. Also, you can see state aid is another positive area for us. That's really, I mean, sorry, sales tax, excuse me, is a positive area for us. Over the last several years, it's gone by several hundred thousands of dollars. We're kind of leery when it comes to that because there's certain indicators and economic indicators that are saying that that shouldn't be happening, but we continue to get more money in sales tax. So we're not sure when that's going to run out or when that's going to change. So we're a little cautious about that as well. Another part of the budget is a capital outlay project, which we propose every single year. They're about $100,000. There is something new in this budget to increase this $150,000, which we're really hopeful that will happen. So for next year, we're looking at Parkdale. The monies from capital outlay projects need to be spent in one building. So this year, it's going to be Parkdale. We're looking at the replacement of the phone system. We did the phone system this year at the high school, the year before at the middle school. The numbers look like they're coming in pretty positive around that. So we might be able to do some of the cameras or the concrete work as well. The levy limit calculation, again, it's a formula. We talked about a 2% tax cap, which isn't really the case. I mean, there's certain pieces in this formula. So do you want to say anything about it?
Yes, the 2% is one, or the fifth line down. It's the allowable growth factor, and that's what the governor refers to and what you hear in the public, a 2% cap. That's 2% or CPI, whichever is lower. So CPI is obviously higher this year, so we're capped at 2%. But there are other factors within it that affect the calculation.
For us, the cap limit was 3.13%. This year, we decided to reduce that to 2.74%. That is kind of something that's happened over the last several years. We talked about with our community that we were trying to get back into the twos because we went out with 1.6, 6.9%. We were at 5 and 4. And so we really wanted to push some adjustments to get down below 3%, which we did at 2.74%. And here's the tax rate. It's $13.07.
That's the estimated rate. I don't have all the factors yet to figure out what the rate will be, but based on our current year assessed values, this is what I'm projecting with the tax levy that we're proposing.
And our rate is one of the lowest out of our Erie one and Erie two BOSIs, so we're really proud of that. And we'll see kind of cost per student in just a moment. So here is the projected budget. This year, it's $41,296,498. We're proposing an increase of $2,506,264 for our proposed budget, which will be voted on May 16, of $43,802,762. We look at the last line, we use that value of a home assessed at $100,000 because the majority of our homes are assessed at $100,000 or less. So for those taxpayers, it'll be an increase of about $132 per year or $11 per pupil. Again, here's, we look at these expenditures per pupil. Our per pupil expenditure is about $16,500. When we compare that to other districts in Erie County, they're spending approximately $18,119. And when we compare ourselves to all of New York State school districts, there's about 700 across the state, the average per pupil expense is $23,468. So for us, when you look at this, is that you know, doing pretty well, keeping costs tight, but doing a good job, getting what a good product. So the propositions, this is what the ballot will look like. First part of it is talks about the budget itself, which again is $43,802,762. Second part is the expenditure from the technology reserve. I mentioned earlier, we're going to be pulling $75,000 out of the technology reserve to buy new Chromebooks for our students. When we do that, we have to ask permission from the public to do so. And then the other piece of it will be voting for the board members for the board election. And so that's, so what happens if the budget doesn't pass? We always talk about this at this time. So the revote will take place on June 20. If we have to adopt a contingency budget, we'd have to reduce the budget by $693,301. In general, that is about 4.5 FTEs or teaching positions. We couldn't purchase any equipment. We'd have to reduce athletics and co-curriculars. They would also call the capital outlay project would be in jeopardy. And along with other various contractual obligations, those would have to be adjusted as well. And here's the calendar.
We're at the end.
You didn't start. Back, actually in the hall, but our first meeting that we talk about the budgets typically in December, we go through this process of budget workshops to develop budget over several months. We work with the Budget and Finance Committee, also has a big role in developing the budget throughout this process. So next thing is today's the hearing on May 3, when we announce the budget notices, and then we vote May 16, which is just 13 days away. Any questions?
Questions? Nope.
I read it while I was still waking up this morning, but did I read that they came to agreement on the state budget?
Yes.
We have dribs and drabs of the information. We received our state aid runs. We know that there's not the set aside, was not included for the tutoring. We still have not heard on the capital outlay. We still have not heard on the P-22. Is that what they're calling it? So there's still things that we don't know, but we have our numbers.
Additional funding for pre-aid.
That came through.
So that just, so literally kind of figured out. Either day of the year. This year.
Universal Feeding sort of came through, but it's only for high-needs districts.
Thank you. Yes?
Is this but board questions at this point or?
Well, if we still have them, absolutely. Then I'm moving on to.
Just one more. On this universal feeding thing, I read that, just what you said, that somehow or another that this was going to only apply to districts that were in the community provision.
Community eligible.
Yes. And, but I wonder if we can look into that because it doesn't make any sense to me. That provision that's there uses federal money to provide the same service. So if you're in one of those districts that's community eligible, then everybody in the district is fed breakfast and lunch free of charge with the federal government picking up the tab. So where is this $120,000 million of state money going to go?
Good question.
If it's only going to those districts, it doesn't make any sense at all.
Good question.
So if we do that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson.
Yep.
Other board members? Thank you. Opening up now to community comments, if anyone would like to make any comments specifically on the budget presentation. Anyone this evening? Come on, you're all very excited about it. Board member comments? Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Flowers. Seconded by Mrs. Daniel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, presentations carried seven zero. Item four, any agenda changes? Item five, reports and discussion items. Part one. Item six, item seven, superintendent's comments.
Yes, I just wanted to let the board know and I think you're aware that we received the appeals of the Highness Commissioner's appeal. And so I'm happy to report that the Commissioner dismissed the appeal and supported the superintendent's review of comments. And so we're just really grateful that it went that way, and it'll be posted on the website for the public.
Any legislation to come before the board? All right. Moving on to item nine, board presidents and board member comments. I have a few things this evening. I believe you all had a phone call or a message from our auditor. He, I spoke with him yesterday. He does not need to talk to anyone at this point. He doesn't have any questions for them, but if you do have questions, you're welcome to tell them back. If you need his number, please let me know. I don't have anything else there. He just gave an update on the progress, and Ms. George can follow up. Great. The Communications Engagement Committee met yesterday. Mr. Cassidy and O'Wiler were there. Presentation, facilities committee presentation updates from our building principals, and very light attendance from our community members. So we can speak with Mr. Ross later, the superintendent, about maybe looking at another way to engage with some of those community organizations that may not be getting their schedule. The Policy Committee has a meeting this Friday to carry on that work. We have an opportunity to look into doing board docs training so we can move on to our new, latest, and greatest modern version of technology. I'm going to propose that we look into possibly adding a 30-minute training session onto the front end of our August meeting, but we can put it out there and everybody think about it, and we'll talk to the superintendent about what might work. I had the opportunity to attend the East Aurora Educational Foundation-sponsored Alumni Hall of Fame induction. I won't take any wind out of Mr. Robert Sales, who might want to talk about it a little bit further, but it was a phenomenal event, and it is so cool to see the generations of brilliance that comes out of this community. It's just absolutely incredible. So I highly recommend that to anyone who can fit it on their calendar next year. But I'm sure Mr. Flowers can fill us in on what happened on the end in the high school where those amazing alumni go back in and talk to our high school students. And the last thing that I have is board evaluation. It's time for us to evaluate ourselves. So I'll send you the documents that we used last year so you can all do some thinking on your own, and then we'll pull it back together and you, and from there, we can decide if this is, if there are goals that we need to set. That's all I have. Mrs. O'Wiler?
Thank you. I'm sorry, remind the board that we have a retreat coming up with all the administrators on May 31st, so I'll make sure.
Is that in our calendar?
It was like a month and a half ago, two months ago? I didn't know what it was.
Didn't get on the calendar.
It was sent out. It was sent out.
Landed on my calendar, so it must have gone out.
Do we have a?
What was that time?
Five, five.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. So.
Do you have it on?
On the committee. On my calendar. All right. Secondly.
Resend that, please.
Yeah. Can you resend that? Or is it?
Yep. Thank you. Last, I'm sorry, it was at five, right? I mean, I was there. I don't remember. Yeah, it was at five. Yep.
I attended last week a live virtual policy workshop that was titled Religious Freedom of Expression for Staff and Students. I have all the information. If you'd like to hang of that, just let me know, and I'll gladly pass that on to you. And lastly, I attended the textbook committee meeting last week with Ms. Kibler, and we were looking at a math program at Parkdale, and they researched eight different programs and decided to use the Rudea Squares. And it's going to be used in K through 4. This way, it's going to give continuity across all the grades. And if you believe on May 16, Ms. Lyons, representative from the company, to see if there's a feeder program that will be used. The nice thing about this actual program is that for the last eight years, they've been getting feedback from schools and from teachers about the math modules, and then they've been planning and changing accordingly to what the suggestions and the feedback was. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Porta?
I was at that meeting as well, and I thought it was a really nice addition to the math presentation, the curriculum presentation. And so it was nice to come at the, looking at that textbook based on what they had already presented as their goals and their vision and why they were switching to that. So I, good continuity there. I like that. On April 19, we hosted our first hands-only CPR and AED instruction. Mr. Landrach ran that, and he did a phenomenal job of engaging everybody. There was actual practice. And we had over 50 people sign up, and we had about 40 that were there. I don't know the exact number, but the really cool thing that kind of surprised me was we had little kids, you know, from, I don't know, seven years old maybe, all the way up to elderly. And they were all there and actively wanting to learn and engage. And we just, I was really happy to see the community. And it wasn't just our school community. So it was really nice to see the community come out for that. And I would like to, after discussing it with some of the admin, I would like to propose maybe this is something we could add to our calendar. Maybe this could be, maybe if Mr. Landrach was up to it, maybe this could be something we do once a year, you know? And we could really reach out. It seems like especially there was a senior contingent that was so happy to be there and understand how they could help and what they could do and where they could find help and all of that. So I would, I would like to propose that maybe we discuss that at some point, adding that to the calendar, and maybe like actually getting it on our school calendar. Any thoughts on that? Or do I just keep on?
People.
Okay. Then I attended the high school and middle school combined concert, and there was also some select chorus there. That was last, last week. Last week. That was excellent. It was the first time I'd seen the middle school and the high school combine for the jazz concert, and it was exciting to see the middle, like in the high school, jazz concerts are always just absolutely amazing. And every time I go, I sit there and go, nobody knows, like I'm getting a free concert. I feel like I'm at, you know, somewhere. It's awesome. But it was really cool to watch the middle school students watch, listen to the band, the high school band, and then play with them. And they sounded great, but the middle school students stepped off the stage, and so many were like, did you hear me? Didn't that sound good? Didn't that sound good? Like, it was just a, it was a really cool vibe, and it was just a different experience. So I thought that was, that was really good. And then the other, just the final thing, a comment that came up, actually right before I came here, I was speaking to a parent who said, what do you mean so-and-so has practiced at 7:00? And I said, yeah, well, that's what time they have practiced, because look at the field, blah, blah, blah. And the parent said something, and I was like, well, this is why we vote. You know, the, when we had people that came to our capital, you know, our capital fund project, and they said, well, what do you mean the kids need extra field? What do you mean we don't have enough? And it was great to have people that came and asked questions. And I would just like to refer back to those people that had those questions, or even parents who had questions now, and say, well, this is why. We can't control this weather. We're doing the best we can for every single student, but this is why we have those extra projects, and we're trying to build a better space for those students. But I don't think that always gets through, and I think it's similar to now. I wish that there were more people here that had asked questions about the budget. They had an opportunity, and they're going to ask when it comes up like this, like, what do you mean I have to, whether this isn't available or that isn't available? Well, talk to us. So.
It's kind of an ongoing problem.
Yes, yes. We need more people here to question.
Thank you, Ms. Colton. Okay. Mr. Cassidy?
Yeah, just one thing. Your comments, your report on the Community Engagement Committee meeting reminded me of a conversation I had at Colton during the draft meeting all of them last night. A parent who works at another district, I had mentioned, the Community Engagement Committee, and she is on the committee in her district and said that they had, I don't know if it's always someone from BOSI who's involved, but somebody from BOSI came and ran it for them, and she said it was so wonderful. It gave them so much life and ideas and things to implement. So thinking about the low turnout and that, I would be happy to reach out to them and get the name of that person because I think it was a lot, had a lot to do with the individual view.
Great, thank you. I think we, I think we had a productive meeting yesterday with the PTO, but then there was another meeting later that, so we got to figure out how to engage with the rest of the community. It's the label that the PTO is so engaged, that's amazing. We're very fortunate. What about everybody else? Mr. Flowers?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Brunson?
Couple, couple of things. First of all, thanks to all the community members who came and board members who came to the event on Friday that Jessica was talking about a minute ago, honoring the distinguished alumni. It was great to see Hubbard Hall jam-packed with folks. And the, these particular five people have lots of friends, and they all wanted to show up and acknowledge their accomplishments in their lifetime. So it was a great, a great event. The, I have a couple of things relating to the foundation. As you know, the foundation is building an outdoor classroom and gathering space on the lawn of the school, right up there, at the base of the flagpole. There'll be a dedication ceremony on June 8 at 5:00. So if you can come, we're celebrating the, all of the difficult activities that were required during the pandemic, and how well the community pulled together and the school district worked together with the community to survive those three years. And this is a celebration of everyone in the community who had to endure the difficulties of the pandemic. And so the celebration will be on June 8. Now, it's not complete yet, but the Ormsby Center students in four different classes are putting the finishing touches on the table and benches that will be installed out there. And I heard today that they're intending to come for the installation the week of May 27. So does that make sense to you? I want to thank the people in our maintenance department for working and coordinating with Ormsby to, for the final part of this. It's hard to build a table and benches with this many people involved, you know? If you had one carpenter working, you'd probably be all alone. But all the, all the hard work of the students, the teachers, and our maintenance people are coming together to install the final parts of this outdoor classroom and gathering space the week of the 27th of May, and then the dedication will be June 8. So we hope you can come. And one other thing about the foundation is Cindy Bozek, who has been working with us for years in the foundation as our administrative assistant, is retiring. And, and she will stay with us to coordinate the Keller Scholarship. So we'll still see Cindy around occasionally, and the bulk of her work and, and further development work will be done by a new person who's coming along, Brittany Newman. And so if you have a chance, that door behind Paul over there is the foundation office. That's where Brittany will be, small office without a window. The way it is. So, so thank you to the district for welcoming Brittany and making her feel comfortable.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brunson.
Can I just comment on that? Mr. Brunson, I'd just like to say that thank the Board of Directors again. They've supported recently some really fantastic projects for our students, including our Rocket Crew program, where students go to Huntsville, Alabama, in addition to the outdoor classroom. Also, the project for Blue Double Design, they provide a great deal of money to get that project started, and it's taken off, and it's been a huge success. And also then, and most recently, is the agriculture course that was involved in quality. Continue to support those things as well. And so all those things wouldn't be possible without support, so we're really grateful.
Well, I'll pass the word. They know how you feel about it. You've always been very kind in your praise of the foundation's work, so thank you very much for that.
Anything to say?
Yes, actually, Mrs. O'Wiler and I, the District Parent Council meeting yesterday, and that's an opportunity where we get to hear from the various PTO boards for each of the schools, and they can give us an overview of what's happened since October up until this point in time. So I'm just going to very briefly touch on the different schools and what's happened there. They have the upcoming author visit at Parkdale that is coming up, and the PTO is providing a book for each student from that author. So that's about 600 books, I think? So 700 books. So, yeah. So that's coming up. There was a character traits assembly, and then they have been providing teacher grants, and they were discussing that they've increased the teacher grants. It's gone between $250 and $1,000 based on the proposal, and they said they've had a lot of innovative and interactive activities, so they're trying to support that grant program. And then they also are providing assistance on some of the field trips that are coming up. At the middle school last week, the 5th and 6th grade had the, an activity day with dance and games and food. The 7th grade, the Boys and Girls Club has offered to host the 7th grade, and I guess they're going to be providing food and games, and it's going to be, I'm not sure when that is, it's coming up, I guess.
It's May 24, I think, or 25, whatever that Thursday is.
Okay, so they're doing that. And then the 8th grade, they have the June, they have the dance, they have Camps Gno Casan, and there'll be also a 5th grade information night, and they're talking about trying to improve communication between the 4th graders going up to the new school. So this is just something the PTO is involved with. And then for the high school, they talked about, again, teacher grants, doing mentoring lunches, and the big thing that's coming up, obviously, is the prom. And they really were talking about just trying to, the prom is from 7 to 11. They are going to be offering a bus. They're going to see what the numbers are in terms of that bus to see whether or not the students will be riding the bus. Then the post-prom is from 11 to 1:30, and they're having a hypnotist, and they really would like to get the students to go to post-prom, maybe go experience something different, see a hypnotist, and the different food and these and all that type of stuff. So that was sort of an overview. I don't know, did I miss anything, Mrs. O'Wiler?
No, I think you hit, you hit on everything.
And, oh, one other thing, just at the high school, they did a March Teacher Appreciation dessert also. So, and then they'll be working with graduation and senior week. So a lot of different things going on. PTO doing a lot of different things to support our students in very positive ways. So thank you to that and all the hard work, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and one other thing. Tomorrow we have at 3:15 our Athletic Advisory Committee meeting, so if anyone, that's on the committee.
Yep, and, um, just now I received, um, two recognitions for the New York State School Boards Association. One, a Board Achievement Award to Joe Cassidy for participation in the New York State School Boards Association Leadership Development Training. Congratulations. And then I received the Board Achievement Award, again, for the New York State School Boards Association for participating in their leadership development. I hope you.
Thank you, thank you, board members for your extra engagement and extra time. Moving on to administrator comments. Is there anyone who has anything to share with the board this evening?
Um, so at Parkdale, um, we had celebrated, we're celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week by teachers around the world. Each day we're celebrating a different country with a different treat. Um, they've visited England and Italy so far. Tomorrow they head to Sweden and Friday, Mexico, obviously. Um, as stated, the PTO is sponsoring our upcoming author visit. Um, we're super excited to invite Zachariah O'Hora to the building. Um, he's going to be here next Thursday and Friday hosting assemblies for all students pre-K through fourth grade, workshop, individual workshops for grades one through four, where he's going to dive into illustrating books and how he creates his characters. Um, and as stated, every kid is going to get a book. Um, some of them will be signed and placed in the library and we're doing a really fun spirit week based off of a bunch of his books. Um, so we're super excited for that. And then lastly, coming up on May 19th, we have our PTO-sponsored fundraiser. We're doing the Go For Blue and White Obstacle Course where students are going to participate in a short obstacle course outside, but they're, um, trying to reach an $18,000 goal and they're cruising along. So take a look at this week's peak for some more information about either donating or being a corporate sponsor. We would appreciate any help for next year's PTO-sponsored events. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Parker. Who else this evening? Mr. Libra?
Just, uh, very briefly, we, we just got notification earlier this week that we had two students recognized through the General Federation of Women's Clubs, which is a national organization with state and local chapters. A few months ago, a number of students submitted various pieces, whether it was short stories or poetry, and about eight of them were recognized at the regional level, which were then moved on to the state level. We had two students, uh, one was Liam Edwards, who took third place in a three-grade level category for a short story on, uh, the Kid of Football. Uh, and then we had a first-place winner, Lilia Diggatano, who wrote a poetry piece called "Time." And so she is a New York State winner for her category and then her piece will be moved on for judging at the federal level. And, uh, so that'll be down in Washington DC and we should find out sometime in June how she did. So, uh, really big accomplishment for the two of them.
Mr. Libra, what grades are they in?
They are fifth and sixth grade.
Oh, fifth and sixth.
Yes.
Congratulations to them.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Thanks to the foundation for the Alumni Hall of Fame event, tremendous success. If you haven't been to that event, it's, it's definitely worth attending. Um, and I agree, Mr. Brunson, to have a full Roycroft Room to celebrate was really nice this year. What that group doesn't necessarily see is the alums then come up to the high school and have an opportunity to share their stories, uh, and their success from Eastborough High School all the way to now their induction into our Hall of Fame. And, uh, some of those presentations were, were, um, really nice for our students to hear, so much so that we recorded a few of them because we thought we would want to share those, those stories with more students, uh, over the years. So that was, that was new this year. And, uh, it was, it was a little bit of a, a wake-up call to me because it was the first time that a student was inducted into our Hall of Fame that was a student since I've been at Eastborough. So feeling, feeling very old. Um, the other thing that I just wanted to bring to your attention is, I, I think our, our seniors and juniors and parents received this this afternoon. If not, they'll receive it tomorrow, um, morning, but, but a list of 13 upcoming events and celebrations, uh, for our, our juniors and especially our seniors, uh, all the way from information on prom, our community service days, um, to, uh, our senior week activities. And I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board two events that, that I'd like to extend an invitation to. Uh, as we move away from class rank, um, we are planning what I think is going to be a special scholarship and senior awards night. And that is on, um, June 7th at 7:00 in the high school. So all of those traditional scholarships that we would have given out of graduation pre-COVID, um, will be, uh, awarded that night with all of our community partners in attendance to give those scholarships to our seniors. Plus all of our academic departments are going to give, um, three to five, uh, awards specific to student success within the, the academic departments at Eastborough High School. So I'd love for you to attend. We've got some great desserts. Um, and, uh, I think Mr. Russ is going to kick off the event with some welcoming statements and then we'll rock and roll through some of those special awards. And then the last one is our graduation planning committee, uh, met for the first time this past week and plans are, are rolling along for our outdoor graduation ceremony, uh, Saturday, June 24th at 10:00. So if you haven't attended that, um, I'm, I'm confident in saying we've, we've worked out all of the, uh, the issues that might come up in our graduation other than, you know, the weather. Uh, but we'd love to have all of you at, at that, um, special occasion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Roberts, the banners?
Banners go up on June 1st and 2nd.
Awesome. Anyone else this evening? Thank you very much for being here. Moving on to item 11, community comments. I don't have any cards, so I don't believe anyone has any comments this evening.
No cards.
Thank you. Item 12, reports and, reports and discussion items. Um, Ms. George, the business.
Hi, um, tonight our financial reports are as of the end of March. Um, in our general fund, we had approximately $14.8 million in the bank, which ties to our cash flow statement. Um, and we should be good with cash flow to make it through the summer. We had expended approximately 66% of our appropriated appropriations, our expenditures, and we had received approximately 92% of our revenues. Um, the cafeteria fund is, as of the end of March, is showing a slight, um, to the good, revenues over expenditures by about $7,500. In our federal funds, we've had expended $1.8 million and received 1.5. I want to commend, um, the treasurer, Julie. Um, she does a very nice job of making sure that we're getting our drawdowns and getting our money as we spend it. And the last fund I have is the capital fund and it's just that we've expended about $121,000 out of that. Most of that is for the $100,000 capital outlay and we are starting to expend some of the, um, soft costs, incidental costs for the big capital project, for the work that's been done so far. That's all I can.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. George? Moving on to item B, the capital facilities project.
Yeah, so we continue to work with architects and engineers. This is what we prepared for the first, um, first round of the project, which will start in the spring of 2024. Uh, they're preparing the, um, the final documents to submit to the state, uh, which we're hoping will clear and we'll be able to go out to bid in December. Mr. O'Wiler, there's going to be a senior review there. If there's anything else you want to introduce.
No, no, it's our last meeting.
Yeah. It's been about the same.
We're having a meeting coming up for the next meeting. We'll have more information to share with you.
Yeah, and so, actually, no, at the next meeting, they're going to come and speak to the board. Yeah, so the architects are going to join us and present, uh, the 16th. Yeah, so they give us an official update.
And if there's any questions you have then, you can obviously ask questions and.
What meeting? The next meeting?
Tuesday, May 16th.
That's the vote.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have time.
We'll have plenty of time.
Yes, thank you. All right. Moving on to item 13, uh, consensus items. Is there anyone who wishes to remove a consensus item from the consensus agenda? No. Here none may have a motion to approve the proposal. Moved by Mr. Flowers.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Daniu. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions carried 7-0. Item 14A, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education perform a second reading to adopt the policies largely known as the EA 6000 policies, uh, facing the current 7,000 section of the policy manual as detailed in your agenda.
So would.
Mr. Cassidy?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Daniu. Discussion. Just more gratitude to Mr. Memretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions carried 7-0. Item B, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education perform a second reading to retire the policies collectively known as Section 7,000 policies, uh, replaced by EA 6,000. Moved by Mrs. Daniu. Seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions carried 7-0.
Item C, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Heather Date.
Wow.
Um, as detailed in your agenda. May have a motion. Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Seconded by Mrs. O'Wiler. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions carried 7-0. Item D, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Jason Zebenbergen as detailed in your agenda. May have a motion.
Second.
Daniu?
Sir.
Seconded by Mr. Flowers.
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate both of them and, uh, say actually how sorry I am. He's been, he's rolled, had wonderful careers, many teachers have done so much for our student body. We're really, we can go, but we'll hopefully celebrate with them in June when we have all the retirees, uh, with us for that meeting. So again, just congratulations.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions carried 7-0. Item 15, is there any new business? Item 16, there are items of information. There are upcoming meetings and workshops and conferences. Is there anyone who wishes to add an agenda item to a future meeting?
I just want to add one upcoming thing is the candidate form on Monday.
Oh, yeah, thank you. 7:00 PM? 7:00 PM in the multi-purpose room? No.
No, here.
Sorry, thank you. My Coleman library.
This is also, yesterday.
In fact, the library and meeting. Thank you, Mr. Jesse. I don't know where you, tell me where we would add it to discuss it, um, adding to the calendar, the CPR. So you, we would bring that to, to help Mrs. O'Wiler, the superintendent, and we're here to discuss. Okay. Yes, sure. Thank you. CPR training. Thank you. Anything else?
Well, just, just when the details of the big ugly, well, the, the big ugly, even what that is, the, the big, uh, budget bill from Albany, when the details come out, if we could have some kind of an update, uh, sometimes NISBA does a webinar, uh, if many have, perhaps we could be invited to come and sit in a room where we watch it on a big screen. I think there's, I'm particularly concerned about that money for, for, for nutrition, but there are other aspects of, uh, that I think we would benefit from learning more details. They sent us the, the aid runs. Were the aid runs the same as the previous aid runs?
Very similar. I haven't gone line by line. I just looked at the numbers.
Yeah, I took a quick look and it looked like it was.
Very similar.
Yeah, and they say, but in the summary, they said they're spending a lot more money in pre-K, so I'm interested in what they're doing with that. They're spending a lot more money on, uses for state funds, but the details, the devil's in the details.
And, and one thing about the, the pre-K money, we don't necessarily receive all of it because we receive per pupil a certain allotment. And so if we don't fill up the required slots, then we don't receive the entire.
Well, even if they allocate more to us, it doesn't matter because we're, we're accommodating everybody who is interested in doing it, which is a wonderful thing. The fact that we're able to do that is a great thing.
Right now we have 12, we have 12 students waiting because our previous funding-supported four classrooms are moving into a fifth classroom, but that fifth classroom won't be filled. So we'll redistribute the classes, so they'll be a little smaller next year, but we won't receive the full funding.
Right. It's per pupil.
Has not changed.
Now, the per pupil amount hasn't changed. We just don't have like full classes, so we don't receive. Yeah, we just receive.
And we potentially could get some more students over the summer and we have space for those students, which is wonderful.
Do we have everything else they need? The, I'm not trying to just delay this here, I know.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask folks, just hang in there with us. You're not quite at your hour yet and we're still holding the meeting, so just hold on there.
We've been quite a jerk. Do we have everything else we need for the, that additional classroom furniture or supplies?
We're working on that right now. Yep, we're working on it right now in terms of moving, uh, classrooms to accommodate our pre-K students and also to support our kindergarten students. Uh, we just had a meeting this morning with Ms. Love. Um, we, that with the kindergarten and pre-K teachers and Mrs. Pantoa and kind of working through it. So, yeah, they're on it.
They're working on it. Thank you very much and thank you to the people at Parkdale for flexing.
Thank you for the question. Is there any other information to come for the board this evening?
Just wanted to make a note of the time, it's only 15 minutes.
They don't get credit because they come in here for an hour, right?
You guys have 10 minutes for break.
We're going to leave before the students.
Yeah, yeah, they have to sit.
They have to stay late.
They have a motion during the meeting. Mr. Cassidy, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Wiler. Resolution, all those in favor?
Aye. Opposed, abstentions carried 7-0. Meeting dismissed.